The public forum at 7:01. Anyone from the public which to speak? We will close the public forum at 7:01. There is no public hearing, so we'll move on to town council to consider acceptance of minutes. I will accept a motion on the minutes, the October 24th, 2015, part one review of the town budget. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
They were there for a little walk.
Just guys.
Day and night.
I do have to comment, you know, considering the amount and the length, it was very well, you know, it really was.
Yeah. I got that awesome job. Thank you.
You got a good attitude.
Yeah.
Positive feedback sometimes is nice.
Actually some wrong kindness, yeah.
Seeing no discussion, other than saying what a great job she did. Mr. Minister of the Vote.
Councilmember.
Hi.
I did have just one, very quick question. I'm sorry.
Yep.
It's not about the, that they weren't taken right. I just want to make sure that this was the intent of Matt.
What page?
It was on page four of the minutes. It was at the top. It said, just be with me. It said Levy asked interim finance director Angel what he had projected for motor vehicle revenue for the town for this year, and he estimated 1,290. That's 1,290,000. He explained that he had tried to tighten up the revenue estimate for '17, so less revenue was being turned back to the fund balance. And he said he budgeted as high as actual revenues being received. So I just want to make sure that was the intent of what Matt said it is. Okay. Just want to, because the way I read that, I read if we had had another couple of hundred thousand come in for motor vehicles, I would have budgeted to that. And that's the only reason I asked that question, because I wasn't sure if that was your intent or you were trying to say that, I mean, I'm not doing this for my benefit. I just want to make sure that was the intent of Matt. Because it's basically saying if we had more revenues come in, I would have budgeted to more revenues, not necessarily what the town needed. So is, do you know what I'm trying to say? No. If, let's say, let's say the revenues had come in another $200,000 higher. The way I read this, then we would have budgeted higher, another $200,000, whether we needed it or not. That's how I read this, and I didn't know if that was really the intent of Matt. No, that wasn't the intent. Am I reading it wrong?
No, you're not, but the discussion, sorry, I'm jumping in. The discussion at that part was he would, what I, what I was given to understand is that he included a budget line item for revenues that was actual, not higher, we're not talking about increasing the expense budget to meet it.
And I, I think that's accurate, but the way I read this, and he said he budgeted as high as actual revenues, so I can see, you know, he budgeted to the real number. Right. But I just want to make sure that he wasn't thinking that if it came in higher, he would just necessarily spend more in the budget. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that, just for the record.
Spending at all, as the revenue decided.
Okay. No problem. That was my only little corner.
Any other? Now, Mr. Minister.
Councilmember.
Aye.
Councilwoman Pike.
Aye.
Council Thompson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Weinstein.
Aye.
Council Levy.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
I will accept a motion on minutes of October 28th, 2015, part two review of the town budget.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
I'm doing a minor thing on page 21 of the packet, under welfare, the third line. It says NCP, it should be NCEP.
NCP?
No, NCEP.
Oh, NCE.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, bye now.
Thank you.
Any other comments or corrections? Seeing, Mr. Minister of the Vote.
Councilmember.
Aye.
Councilwoman Pike.
Aye.
Council Thompson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Weinstein.
Aye.
Council Levy.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Accept a motion to approve the minutes of our November 4th, 2015 regular meeting.
So moved.
Councilwoman Weinstein. Council Thompson, a second. Everyone gets to play. Does anyone have any comments or adjustments? Seeing now, Mr. Minister of the Vote.
Councilmember.
Aye.
Councilwoman Pike.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman Weinstein.
Aye.
Council Levy.
Aye.
Councilman Mizrahi.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
And I do want this in the minutes, I should have said it upfront, Council Pickering is an excused absence. He's away. Report to town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item is we received six firms, proposals from six firms for general engineering services. Director Public Works, Town Planner, Wam Sures, Superintendent Finance Director, and I are narrowing it down to a small number to bring in for interviews. We should actually now have a proposal for the second meeting in December, just because of the holiday next week, just trying to schedule an interview, which is not the best timing. The, I received communications from Senator Ford Clark soliciting for any legislative items that we may have for the coming session, so if you have any issues, please let me know. We can submit some tipper ideas. I do want to make you aware of some enabling legislations that I'm working on with the town manager of Newport, New Hampshire. One of the topics we've heard over and over again is regionalization and sharing services with other government entities. The town of Newport was working on an agreement to share finance directly between school and town. I want to look into this for some of our services as well, sharing with the school. When talking to Newport, though, there was no enabling legislation to allow for this agreement. Since we do not have a home rule in the New Hampshire municipalities, can only do what we have permission to do from the state. The town manager of Newport has contacted Senator Little, his town, and I have been contacting Senator Ford Clark and our representatives to amend the law to allow this, and I'll keep the council aware of any developments. At the last meeting, there were questions on arrangements made between the town and the Eagles in the past. We did some research on the previous, on the previous property, and for the information, they did not pay taxes on their old building. Had the town not had an interest in their property, they would have lost that building as well. Our records indicate that they did not pay their taxes for 2005, '06, and '07, which the town played, then placed a lien on the parcels for those years. In 2007, the town's attorney paid off the lien, which we assume is part of the option to purchase the deal at that time. As part of the option, the town had to purchase the property. Eagles were to pay 1,000 a month until the property was vacated. When the Eagles closed on the new facilities until such time as that, that was the NCDC, the town or developed or lax, take possession of the property, but no later than September 30th, 2008, with the time the Eagles shall vacate the property. That's what the agreement said in 2007. They still have an unpaid balance, actually, from $500 from that lease. To distinguish that lease from to the current situation, the lease was to further the interests of the town, which was to develop the mill. Today, we have no interest in developing that, their property. We made the town attorney aware of this. Just an update on the fiscal year. We have expended 29% of the operating budget, which brings us under where we should be by 4%, and under where we were last year by 3%. The main reason for this is that we have not expended the road paving budget at the end of October, nor have we done any sidewalk construction. Road paving will be in the next monthly budget report. Other than that, all the departments are on target. The town revenues may seem to be off in the report. That's due to the time period for issuing tax bills. They did not go out until this month, so you only see 52% collected versus last year was 101% collected for the same period since the bills went out earlier. Other areas, motor vehicle registrations are running slightly higher than budgeted as are building permits and planning board applications. I did want to give an update on the road management program. I met with university and Stafford Regional Planning today, and they're continuing to move forward with that. We, they have completed the collection of the initial data. They've driven all the roads and broken up the roads in segments and determined what the status of all those, all the roads are. We have reviewed them, and they're going to be doing some updates, just because they've got some roads that partially were not in our town, and some that were private road that we just want to correct. The next phase will be determining the cost and the final report. We should have some of that sometime this winter. I asked them to provide us with a report that just shows us what the cost is of all the roads. And the last time, there was some sticker shock when they saw that it was $500,000 a year, and I asked them to let us pick and choose road, prioritize it, but also let us pick and choose roads to best fit our budget. And Dr. Goodspeed said, now that makes perfect sense, because you don't, he's seen it happen in other communities, that it fails because of the sticker shock, and that's what they're trying not to have happen. So that's where we are with that. Just a little positive thing as well. This week, we did, this year, we had some money left over because of the lack of festivals that we had in that line item. And one of the things I've been hearing about since I first started here was the downtown's awfully dark during the holiday season. So I asked the Public Works Director to look into that. So we will be installing tendies that light up for the downtown using the money, the money that would go into the festivals, and they should be up right around the time for our holiday celebration on the 5th. And there's only 10, there's a reason, we wanted more, but there's no outlets on the other poles. So it wouldn't work. So that's why there are those poles. And that's all I think, Mr. Chair.
All right. Councilor Levy.
What is the status of the Eagles, Steve? Right now?
We're waiting for the court decision.
And, and so when it said here that there was absolutely, you know, it implied there was no use for the building or whatever, what would theoretically happen?
If we were to, if...
Because it's still a building sort of near the wa, I mean, it's not a...
At the last meeting, you actually gave me authority to secure the services of a realtor. So as soon as eviction proceedings go through, we will sell the building, begin marketing and selling the facility. What happens then is that...
Is there appraised value now? Do you know what its value is?
300?
It's already 300,000.
Yeah. But in that situation, we only give back those monies that are owed to us for taxes. The remainder of the profit goes back to the Eagles. And that's state law for, I believe, six years, three years or six years after the sale of the building. I can't remember.
Three years.
Three years. That we only can give back what was owed to us.
Is there any reason they didn't just sell it? Or, I'm just trying to figure out how we...
My understanding is their, their intent is to repurchase from the town. They believe that they'll be able to repurchase it.
Okay.
Counselor, Counselor Pike.
Yeah, a couple of things. One is, I was happy to see the, working on that effort to change the law around regionalization. That looks like a, a good thing. Second thing, I had a question about on the paving report, when that comes in, will they, from what I've heard, that maybe the way to go was talked about doing reconstruction in limited segments. Is that going to be something they'll be able to look at it in, in that fashion?
Yeah, they're going to say there's certain roads that are, lack of, that are failing, and they'll say certain roads are just cracking or crumbling on the sides. They're going to be, they're prioritizing it in different levels. So, yeah, they'll be able to say those are failing, will have to be reconstructed versus those that we just need overlay.
And which sections of that?
Yeah, they do in quarter mile sections, so...
Okay. Yeah, that's small enough. And the last question I had was on the, on the page where it talked about the level of the wells, do we have an update on where we stand, you know, on the Bennett and Sewell wells? That page is...
Yeah, I was trying to get an update today. I just didn't get a chance to get that, because I was curious myself, because of today, so... Last I knew, we still haven't gotten up there yet. That's the problem we...
We're not getting more critical, because we keep them on watering.
Right, we're not, it's not, the people aren't washing things and filling things like they were during the summertime, however, we still haven't gotten the rain. I mean, this October, usually you get a few weeks of drenching rains, and we just didn't get them this fall, so...
Counselwoman Weinstein.
I have a question about the legislation, and I'm happy to see that this is moving forward, but can you just explain a little bit why, why we need the legislation to do it? Why, why we can't just say you wanted to split finance director? You know, why you couldn't pay half, the school pay half?
Yeah. We were... I was, I heard, heard that Newport was already going down this road. So I wanted to follow it and figure out, okay, if they can do it, how do we do it? And they got to the point where they were about to, lack of, that term, pull the trigger and do it, but they determined, their attorney said, well, there's no enabling legislation to do that. The state of New Hampshire...
They're about to do what, though?
To share a finance.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
State of New Hampshire is, there's something referred to as home rule. Home rule states, states that if there is no law prohibiting a municipality or subgovernment subdivision from doing something, then they're allowed to do it. New Hampshire's the opposite. It's called the Dillings Rule. That means that we can only do what the state allows us to do. So the state, for example, back in the '90s, they started to pass law, the municipalities started doing the, what we have, the pay per bag system for garbage. Well, they figured out three or four years into this, that there was no law allowing the municipalities to do that, so they had to pass a law in Concord to do that. So that's why we actually have to go to Concord to get permission to do this before we're doing it.
It's kind of crazy, huh?
Yeah.
It's very tough, it doesn't say anything.
No, it makes Concord our parents.
And they do treat us that way sometimes.
Do you have, sorry, Counselwoman Weinstein. Do you have anything else?
You're troubled.
We can work through this.
Me and Mice, yeah, the nightmare of Mice, he tried to do those things, yeah.
Municipalities are political subdivisions of the state, not independent entities.
Creatures of the state.
Some do act a bit independent.
Oh.
Till they get caught.
Yeah. I got a couple of things before I consider it goes again. Legislative thing, I think it's awesome, I like the regionalization thing, but can we just make sure that however you all work that out, that it is as broad as possible?
It is.
Gives us as much authority as possible?
Yeah.
So that we don't find that there's some weird loophole, that like it doesn't cover certain things. For us, does the council need to present you with potential legislation, or are you just asking it from counselors?
I just ask for counselors that are interested.
Okay. But it would go in as like an individual, not as like...
Yeah.
Right. The roads. So I would love, given that probably now between, with the winter season and with the holiday season, our agendas are a little bit lighter right now. Maybe we could do a workshop once we get all that information, so we can get like really deep as a council into the roads.
Yeah, we won't get it before Christmas.
Oh, that's, I mean, even like, but then we get into the whole deliberative session, like, December, January tend to be lighter agendas.
Yeah, my intent would actually be, because part of this process will also be determining what roads we pave for next year. So I thought having a workshop, going through the entire report, and then we prioritize and say, look, this year, we want to do X, Y, Z.
Yeah. Even if we say like, we just, one month, we only do one regular session and business meeting and one workshop, and just get really in-depth without all the Robert's rules stuff to worry about.
Yep.
I don't know if other counselors would be willing, who are supportive of that. We're missing a department report in here?
We are. And I received it yesterday.
So we have it?
Yeah. I'll send it off.
You just make sure that I got that.
Yeah.
And last thing with the Eagles, I mean, I want to reserve political statement here, but we gave like, they were tax free for years, basically, right?
They didn't pay their taxes.
In their old ones. They didn't pay their taxes, but then the result of that was we just bought it.
Correct.
Because we needed it.
Yep.
And then, okay. So it's not as though we would ever go back into that situation, because that was for the good of the town, because we bought the mills.
Right. We got, we wait, we bought, paid off their taxes, right, because we needed that land as part of the redevelopment of the mill.
Okay. Counselor.
Just when, when they do the report for the roads, Steve, I'm assuming they're going to have a representative come in?
Oh, yes.
And review that whole thing with us? Because, and if, you know, since you're going to be interacting with them, you, you might just ask them to support whatever documentation they come up with, with the, not just the priority, but the feasibility of actually making the road last or sustain? Because I think there's some roads that, you know, we fix, and then they, they have such bad underlay, or whatever the term is for what's underneath, whether it's, you know, in wet areas and whatnot. It would just be nice to have some context to, to whatever they come up with.
Yeah, they're going to, they're going to be prioritizing it and then recommending either reconstruction, resurfacing, crack seal, down to that level. But if it's, you know, okay, we can get the new years out of the crack seal, but say if it's a road that needs to be reconstructed because the system's failing, they'll make that...
And then if there's some that are just in areas where it's, you know, going to constantly be an issue, it would be nice to have that information before we, once, because that'll help us when we start prioritizing.
Right.
I think, so, anyway, that's it.
Any other comments? Town administrator. Committee reports. Who has a committee that needs to report? Counselor Pike.
Planning, planning committee met last week, planning board met last week, and, let's see. We did approve the, the lot line adjustment for the Elm Street subdivision. That was approved. The, there was a, there's a application to, for a site plan review out of Grape Street, and that was continued. That was, the auditorium seemed filled, and when they, as soon as people heard that that was continued to next time, everybody left. So that was that. The vision statement was that, that was the final approval of that chapter. And it was discussion of the excavation permit for the property owned by Wayne and Janice Rosa, but that's just in the process for technical review. And there was discussion at the end of, they formed subcommittees, one for the discussion of the changes to, potential zoning changes based on the joint meeting held with the EDC. I think that's the major things that happened.
Counsel, any questions?
Just one quick one, who's on the subcommittee there? Please. Val's on it, I'm on it, I, I'm not sure of the others, so I don't have the minutes of it yet. There's three? I think it's three or four people that are on it, yeah. They had to, there was discussion of, well, if this gets to be a quorum, is this an issue? And so that, that was discussed, so that's how it ended.
Any other questions? Now the committee reports.
Budget committee will meet next month.
Set our DVRs.
You've already heard this, Steve. It's the same one.
Just real quick, you may have heard us talk about it beforehand, but for the organizational efficiency subcommittee of this group, we've, we went through and rated according to, we set criteria, rated them by criteria, had them ranked order, there are now three, we've gone from seven potential contractors to three. We have divvied up, who is going to, are, just tonight, we're divvying up references to check for the three. We're going to meet again before the next meeting, so hopefully the meeting after that, we can do a first reading for a, authorizing the town administrator to get into a contract with one of those companies. Counsel Pike.
Yeah, I'm just curious if, this is sort of, I don't know if it fits here, but it was interesting to read the newspaper reports on the, on the, Exeter just went through something very similar to this, right? And, you know, and talked about it. You know, it can only glean so much from a newspaper article, but it seemed like they felt that it was, that they, it was a productive process for them. That was, that was my sense. I don't know if any other people have seen the articles, but that's... Was it about MRI doing, was it MRI that did the zoning?
They, they reviewed the, the planning department and their, its organizational structure there, and then some of the general town.
It's pretty critical, apparently.
It was, yeah, and I...
They seemed to accept the criticism well.
Yeah, they, it was sort of something they knew was there, they just needed somebody to make sure, point it out to them. So I talked to my colleague about that over there, and they're very happy to move forward.
Excellent. Thank you, Counsel Pike. With that, we'll move on to old business. I will accept a motion on resolution 2015-16-24 relating to historical society properties still in school. Just a second. Do we have a brief before the discussion? You have a brief, brief?
Yeah, I'll make it brief. Basically, what we're trying to do is, is instead of going before the town council every four years to go and renew this, this deed, we're trying to make it a 50-year lease. The property's going to be in the town's name, and we're just going to lease it back to the historical society.
Okay? Any questions?
Part of this came up because of liability insurance coverage, when we were looking at this, and the amount that they could show up for the facility. So we're basically cleaning it out, making it easier.
Counsel Pike.
Yeah, I mean, it, it really just comes down, is there any reason why the town just doesn't own it forever? And what's...
We, we own it right now. It will revert back to the historical society in December of 2016. Okay? So if we do nothing, it goes back into their ownership. They're, they're responsible for 100% of the, the insurance on the building.
Right, right. So...
Yeah.
I guess if, if the situation, I have no problem with what we're planning to do, I'm just kind of curious, why, why does it end up, that it keeps going back in their hands? Why doesn't it permanently get put in the town's hand if they never want it?
And that's what we're trying to do, is we're trying to permanently put the, the building in our hands and then lease it back to the historical society for 50 years.
Politically speaking, and I threaten to violate service, I remember in the audience, they still want to have some control of the facility in case the town, for some reason, now decided, oh, we don't want to use it for that anymore, which probably never would, because I can't figure out what we would use that for. But that way, they could review it every four years and say, look, the town's not going down the road we want them to, we're going to, it's going to revert back to us. Versus now, they understand that this outlines that we're not going to do anything with it but the historical society unless they leave the facility.
So this is a guarantee of trust, because this is the way they can feel comfortable with it. We're not going to sell it, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions?
Do we charge them anything, just out of curiosity?
It's going to be a dollar.
You're really not leasing, you know, it's just...
Yeah, it's going to be a dollar.
Yes, okay.
I promise I'll run.
Make sure you get that in, in the revenues for next year.
One dollar. Any other comments or questions? Any else?
You know, if it goes to two, we could get 100% increase. What do you think?
It will cost more in paperwork and file, I know. Seeing no other serious comments. Mr. Minister of the Vote.
Councilmember.
Aye.
Councilwoman Pike.
Aye.
Council Thompson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Weinstein.
Aye.
Councilman Levy.
Yes.
Councilman Mizrahi.
Aye.
New business correspondence, resolutions in the first reading. Resolution 2015-16-25, amending the membership of the economic development committee. Whereas resolution 2012-13-02 established the economic development committee, and whereas Whereas resolution 2012-13-02 established the economic development committee, and whereas it is the belief that the membership of the committee is too large, and whereas the committee is currently composed of individuals from the following boards or organizations in Newmarket. Two members of the Newmarket Town Council, one member of the planning board, two members of the Newmarket Community Development Corporation, one member of the Newmarket Business Association, and three at-large members of the community appointed by the town council. Now, therefore, let it be resolved, or be it resolved, that the town council amends the membership of the economic development committee to the following: two members of the Newmarket Town Council, one member of the planning board, one member of the Newmarket Community Development Corporation, and three at-large members of the community appointed by the town council. First reading November 18th, 2015. Um, and we will have discussion on this next time. I would note that that April 2015 committee members you have in there is old.
Yeah.
Or inaccurate, I should say. Um, correspondence to the town councils, or calls and comments.
I'm sorry.
Counsel Weinstein.
Um, I have a couple of things. Um, and it's so early that I don't even... I know. So, last night was the second, um, forum on opiate heroin addiction that was sponsored by the Newmarket Alliance for Substance Abuse Prevention, and it was well-attended. It was here at Town Hall. Um, it had a slightly different format, um, but, um, it was more conversational. We had lots of questions answered.